The clerk, counsel, information that is to be shared with the county administrator and others. I am being told and agree, a county has no responsibility there with regards to restoration and perpetual maintenance. However, we all share responsibility when it comes to preserving our local history. What counsel may not realize, the very important black history, very important historical information waiting to be discovered there at Mount Hebron. History such as this. Greenberry and his sister Edith, two city Chester County children born into slavery, most likely the children of slavery. Greenberry was 16, Edith was 15, when the Emancipation Proclamation came into effect, January the 1st, 1863. The proclamation changing the legal status of more than 3.5 million enslaved Americans, enslaved African Americans, from enslaved to free. Mount Hebron was, is, long overdue for an annual cleanup with the city of Chester in charge. Meant to honor slaves, black families, black veterans. At some point was decided to honor the Reverend Martin Luther King as well. Last all volunteer cleanup, 2015-2016. Current situation, overgrown dumping ground for whatever people have to throw away. Thank you for the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Next is Mr. Edward Hardest.
Ed Hardest, Fort Lone, 5472 Fort Lone, Foxcroft Drive. Our problem seems a little miniscule compared to the last three, so kind of embarrassing. But I'm up here to ask about an ordinance for a carport. A good many years, I've wanted to put a carport in front of my house, a tall standing carport so that it would shed the sun from coming in baking the side of the house in the evenings. Plus, the other conveniences, walking from your car to getting inside your door. But salary was kind of tight, so it took me a few years. Well, finally, when I felt like I had the funds to do it, I go get ready to buy one. Then I come to find out, there's a little light shed on my ignorance here, that there's setbacks and there's ordinances in the county that don't allow for a structure in front of a residence, which kind of blew my mind. And I said, wow, I said, I didn't know that. But then I'm thinking, well, maybe the structure is meant for a four-sided building, not something that's just to cover a car. I spoke to building and zoning Mike Levister, who was super nice, very nice and accommodating. And he told me that this ordinance took place back in like 98. He said, he don't know much about it, other than the ordinance does state that you can't put a structure in front of a residence. And I said, well, golly, I said, isn't there any way, maybe we could look into this and find out why that ordinance was presented? Because I do know there's a lot of people that want carports in front of their house. And of course, a lot of people, what they do is they ask for forgiveness instead of doing the right thing. But I don't want to go that route. I'd rather do the right thing. But what I'm asking is maybe if it can be looked into, possibly put a subsection in there unless it's seen the other way. Anyway, that's all I have, and I appreciate if you look into it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hardest. Ms. Donanna Espinata?
One of these days we're going to.
Yeah, I'll get it one of these days.
My people are Montgomerys, if that's easier for you. Okay, so I'm here tonight to present these petitions again. I think Mr. Guy wasn't here last time. I want to, let me just read them first of all. One is states Chester County Council should adhere to the adopted Gateway Master Plan and its enabling ordinance, abide by the 2020-2030 Master Plan adopted by County Council, and make the plan developments in line with state law. The second we have says, we, the undersigned citizens of Chester County hereby protest the proposed rezoning of tax map 114-0000015000 and tax map 114-0000059000 on Gaston Farm Road from limited industrial to residential plan development. Applicant name of Gaston Springs LLC, Benjamin Layman. Now, I want to clarify that we've never claimed that this is any type of legal document. And so, the majority of the people, maybe not the majority, but a lot of people reached out to us through messenger and text, asking to have their name put down. So this is for your information only, to make sure that you're aware of public sentiment and how the citizens are feeling. For the, let me see, the petition asking that you please appear to the gateway plan that you've already adopted, we have 355 people on that list. And the petition asking that you do not grant the rezoning, we have 422 people on that list. So I'm just here to ask, again, that as our elected representatives, that you listen to us, the citizens of Chester County. And I don't know if, Chairman, would you like a copy?
If you would, give it to the clerk then.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I think I can pronounce this one here correctly. Mr. Bill Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Chairman Brown. I'm Bill Clark, 1461 Ashington Drive in Chester. It's just off, it's to do with the Rodman Road area. And my comments will be brief, but regarding the Griffin Land Holdings request for zoning change, I have negative COVID test, but I do have a cold, so I was wearing a mask for your protection, not mine. Number one, it's unwise. The neighbors, there are several homes with neighbors on Rodman and Blaney Roads to be affected and impermanent. It's immediately adjacent to the ball fields, which everybody knows. And in the presentation of the proposing group before, there was some reference that having an industrial presence there would somehow benefit the ball fields and the kids. And it's beyond my comprehension how that could be. Now, the companies might give money for higher lights or something like that, but we don't know what is coming there, and we don't know if it benefit or harmed the kids. This land is adjacent to our property and is marked by very deep gullies and streams. And for that reason, the developer has proposed a change from a single unit to multiple buildings so that you can honor the topography of the land. It would be my feeling, if I were buying land for financial gain, I would have looked at it pretty carefully and realized this wasn't the place to have, it wasn't the proper place. But that's, a single known entity coming would be much preferable to the four, five, or six that are now under consideration by the developer. So that seems to me, any of those, or all of those, could contribute to noise, to light, and to industrial pollution of some kind. The same notion of an established, long-term neighborhood in the Rodman region that helped you, that helped tank the prior notion of a PD1 development at this site is operative here too. There's nothing changed about the particular neighborhood. So those are a few things, but my main point is that this is manifestly unfair. And the reason it is unfair is that this is an open-ended zoning request. It does not name the entities, entity or entities which will occupy this property. And the plan is for five or six. Now, how can the neighbors be comfortable whatsoever, not knowing what it is that's coming to their land? This may be legal, but it is clearly unfair in my view. I've not experienced that, and I've talked to my friend on the other side of this issue, a lawyer.
You have three minutes left.
Okay, and he says it's legal, but it ain't fair. Because we don't know what to expect, and neither do you when you vote on it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Fran, I guess it's Ms. Fran Hutchins.
Good evening. I'm Fran Sudal Hutchins, 3236 Fishing Creek Church Road. And I've been here several times over the past year, talking to you about the same thing, the Gaston Farm Development. And I'm not going to burden you again by talking about traffic, or about a peaceful country community, or about the roads, or anything else, because I'm still thinking about those things, and it's still heavy on my mind. But I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about the master plan for Chester County, the Gateway Master Plan, and about my recommendation to stick with that. Currently, we do have a master plan for Chester County, the 2020-2030 Master Plan. And over the course of the last few years, we have deviated from this master plan. And normally, when you have a master plan, you don't typically deviate much from this. And typically, it's not a whole lot if you do deviate from it. And the intent on a master plan is to follow this through to get the best type growth, the best plan for growth, and smart growth for a county. Now, when you start deviating from something, you start branching out in different directions. And when you do that, it's not going to really follow the intent of the primary plan with which you voted and with what you approved. So the more we deviate from this plan, the more it's going to sway or grow away from the original intent of that plan. So what I'm asking counsel to do is stick with that original plan. We paid, this county paid a lot of money for that plan. It was matched by additional funds, and we need to stick with the intent of that plan so that we can actually think about and apply the growth principles that were initially established for it. So I ask that you do that. Also, secondarily, look at, we've already approved now around 3,000 houses. Look at what the effects of the infrastructure of this county, how these houses are going to actually impact that infrastructure. We don't know right now what's going to happen in the very near future. We can't see that. We don't have a crystal ball. We need to see, though, the implications for this. We, what if, just like the man was just saying tonight, if he's got an industry that wants to come in very quickly and wants to establish that industry, and let's just say that the prospective employees won't need any training, he wants to do this ASAP. However, if he needs sewer taps going right out the gate, if we've already given up all of the sewer taps that we have right now, how are we going to apply this to industry coming in? So we need to be cognizant of this and think about what we've got coming up. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate what you've done the last year.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, next would be Ms. Robin Dodson.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, counsel. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Robin Dodson. I live just right outside the Gateway District, 3631 Hernandez Road. And I'm just so, have so many thoughts tonight, but I want to say, I do want you to consider and stick with the Gateway Master Plan. I have the map right here. I was so enlightened, go back to hear Charlie Compton speak, about how we need to look for a 30, 40, or 50-year plan in the future. And we have a plan, the Chester Comprehensive Plan, that takes us through 2030, which should be adhered to, and the Gateway Master Plan. So I'm here to say that I'm not, I'm not for changing his industrial on Gaston Farm Road into a planned development. And I have the map, and I know the developer has good intentions, but he bought that ID too, and I feel like he wanted to do that industrial, and he thought he would be able to come down Crenshaw Parkway and use that road. And I would like to see our economic development help Mr. Miller develop his property in the way that it should be developed, and not in the way that it shouldn't. It shouldn't be PD. You can look at the Gateway Plan, and I'm going to probably get stuck on Gateway. I'm very nervous. So the blue is industrial, and here's Mr. Miller's property right here. Goes all the way to here. No, this is Mr. Miller, the gray right here, this huge section, all that going into a PD, well, almost all of that. Then this is commercial. We have a lot of commercial businesses right there. And also, there's where you live, Ms. Mostly, right there, that little yellow. So it's just not a good plan. We need to stick to this plan. And our comprehensive plan through 2020-30, it shows the same thing for the Gateway. And if you'll look, I know it's hard, this is our whole county, industrial, industrial, industrial. Then here's this little section that Griffin wants to put industrial, and it's one place that's left for residential, for us to live. Industrial, industrial. Where are we going to live? Where are we going to live where we have space to live and we're not jammed up in a planned development? Mr. Compton mentioned changing the text for your zoning for planned development. I wasn't able to see what he had done, but I think we need some serious looking at what we are doing. And it's just sad, I've not heard one person come up in favor of Gaston Springs, not one citizen, but yet you have over 400 and something people against it. 400. What if they were all in this room tonight? I'm living near the Gateway. You're tearing it up. You're tearing up our land. I am happy to report that LGI did not put red in the creek over our last rain this weekend. We had a pretty heavy rain. Thank you. Thank you for addressing that. Thank you for keeping our taxes down, because I cut my tax bill last weekend. Wow, $3,000 is going to go to the school district. That's a lot. Divide that by 12 every month, and I don't have a kid in the schools. So just kind of rambling all around. I'm not for it. I'm just not for it. We've got a plan. Why did we even approve it? Up seven more years, why did we approve it if we're not going to follow it? Please follow it. Change your text ordinances so that we don't have to have a developer's agreement every time someone wants to come up, what's a PD, what's a... We have it all in place. They can see what they can do, they can see what they can't. So we don't have to bicker and dicker about $5,000 here, or what are we going to do, or where are we going to put it? We've got it all in place because we've changed our text. Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
We got several people wanting to speak in favor and against the rezoning. I'm going to go ahead and take care of that, and then we have one that's going to speak for the public hearing, and we'll wait till we get to the public hearing part for that one to speak. So at this time, we'll bring one for in favor of rezoning, Ms. Bridget Grant.
Good evening, council members. I'm Bridget Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Morian Van Allen. I'm pleased to be here tonight with Sarah Shirley with Kimberly Horn, representing Griffin Land Holdings on the rezoning map amendment, item C on your agenda. This is a rezoning that's supported by Chester County Economic Development because it has the potential to attract some significant economic development opportunities to the area. You have the presentation we shared with the planning commission in your packet, but I'm just going to say, hit a few high notes and say that we're pleased to have unanimous recommendation of support from the planning board. The site is about 180 acres off of Lancaster Highway, located adjacent to the Rodman Sports Complex. And we're seeking to amend the rezoning from R2 to limited industrial. We did have a prior effort to rezone it to a PD, and it was met with significant opposition. And so we came back to address some of the concerns on public services. As you know, industrial uses don't have the same impact. They're much lower on schools, on transportation, and on water and sewer. Given the location right off of Lancaster Highway and close to I-77, it's a perfect site for an industrial-type use. As I mentioned, the project has support from Chester County Economic Development. It's because this location has the ability to attract economic development when the site's already ready to undergo development. It's taking a very proactive approach to create a highly marketable site that's zoning-ready and in conformance with your adopted land use policy. It's a partnership to advance the goals to attract business, create a great location for Tier 2 and Tier 3 opportunities. It's 40 minutes north of that Scout Motors job, and the site can help Chester win opportunities by already having the zoning in place. As I mentioned, the proposed zoning is consistent with the Chester County land use plan. You don't always get to say that when you're up here giving these presentations on my side. A lot of what we look for is not consistent, but this case, it is consistent with the land use plan. And as a second minor point, Dr. Clark mentioned connectivity. What we're talking about in terms of connectivity to the sports complex is the ability to extend water and sewer to the park, making it feasible for you to be able to provide other amenities and utilities to the park services. Developing this property could also provide the opportunity for additional pedestrian or road connections if it was desirable. This is a traditional zoning, so we don't have any kind of site plan, but we have agreed to limit access so that you can't access off of Rodman Road. What that means is while there are four or five buildings shown as a concept, it's just that, it's a concept. It doesn't mean it's four or five different businesses. We're basically attempting to set it up for the best opportunity that comes before Chester County and develop in accordance with the way the land is, being sensitive to not impacting those creeks, the topography, by breaking up the buildings rather than one large building. So we thank you for your time. We appreciate your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, for the against, Ms. Joanna Engel.
Why do you think I brought it?
Please, no comment.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Engel. I live at 2762 Blaney Road in Chester. Most of you know that I'm a passionate protector of my community. Some would say rabid. But I'm also a Libra, and I can usually see both sides of an issue. So I'm here tonight to suggest an approach that could be a win-win-win for all who are involved in this controversy, including County Council. Let's review. The Eccles Brothers want to sell the property that they inherited for the maximum amount possible. I get that. Griffin Holdings represents them, and they were absolutely on track when they proposed residential for that property. The problem was the density. If you did the math of the units that they proposed and multiplied that by an arbitrary 2.5 people per unit, you would see that there was a real possibility or probability that that development would have a population the same or larger than the current population of the city of Chester, right on the front door of Rodman, a beautiful, historic, stable community. And those kinds of communities play a role in economic development, too. So at that point, with there was opposition, Griffin Holdings pivoted from planned development to ID2. And as Mr. Floyd explained when he was here the last time, talking to the planning commission, that property is crisscrossed by creeks and streams, and it's wet. It's wet. It's boggy. And he explained it wouldn't support one large manufacturing project, it would have to be broken up into several. The problem with that is that Chester County does not need another industrial park. We have them. They're not full. What we don't have, and I've heard people who know, say we need, is executive housing. Now, what if that became the direction of this property? What if we keep R2? The Eccles Brothers could sell 10 to 20 acre-plus homes, home sites along the creeks. It would be beautiful. And they could make, they were selling them for $10,000 an acre, they could make 1.8 or $2 million, probably much faster than they would selling them to potential industries. So they win. The Eccles Brothers would win. The economic development director, Mr. Long, would have a shiny new era in his quiver, executive housing. That would be a win. Rodman would still have a protective buffer with compatible development. That would be a win. And County Council would be seen as wise and fair in accepting Mr. Compton's, your consultants urging to stop or reduce changes to the zoning map. You would get credit for attracting wealth to this community and being environmentally responsible. That's a win for you. Win, 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 win. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, in favor on the rezoning, Mr. Benji Layman?
Hey, I'm Benji Layman with the Isaacs Group, 8720 Red Oak Boulevard, Charlotte, North Carolina. At this point, you guys have seen the plan many times. We continue to tweak things, but the request remains, you know, 400 units. Lot sizes all remain the same. I just wanted to say, I'm here to answer any questions, any technical questions. The property owner's here and representative of the home builder. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and against, Sherry Haley?
Kylie.
Kylie. We can't discuss this, so comment.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Sherry Kylie. I live at 2532 Rodman Road, Chester, South Carolina. Sadly, I'm not as eloquent as my neighbor Joanna, but then I never had a PBS TV show, so not as famous. But I do want to speak a little bit about the Rodman community. I've lived there for close to 40 years now. My family goes back there several hundred years in time. What I've noticed very interestingly tonight, when Ms. Grant got up to speak about the Rodman property, she didn't state where she lives. She didn't give an address, like we all do. I actually live here. The other 400 people that signed the comments live here. You all live here. So whatever goes on in Chester literally does go on in your backyard. And what you need to do is measure the things that you're hearing about, is would you like that if you drove down your driveway and you turned to the left? What do you want to see there? How do you want that changed? Right now, we live in our communities because we choose to live there. If I wanted, I've actually lived in Miami. I've lived in Dallas. I've lived in upstate New York. I've lived in Virginia, all these other places. I don't choose to continue to live there. I live here in a rural community where I've raised my family. Each of y'all were voted into your positions by the people who live in this community. You weren't voted in by the gentleman who lives in Houston, or the gentleman that just spoke that lives in Charlotte. You are from here, we're from here. And I would greatly appreciate you listening to the comments tonight, looking at the turnout, looking at the papers that have been presented, the people that have come, and actually weigh that as if it was your yard and your next door, and is this something that you would want there? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, did we not get Ms. Grant's address? At this time, I'd like to say what her address was. It's 100 North Tryon Street, Charlotte, North Carolina. Make sure the record reflects it. Okay, that ends the public comments. And we have one, we're going to speak on the public hearing, so we will have to open the public hearing up to here to address that. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and this would be the third reading of 2023-19, approving the... reading of 2023-19 approving the execution and delivery of development agreement between the Chester County and Gaston Springs LLC regarding the Gaston Farm Road project and other matters related to that. So at this time, I believe we have Ms. Dorothy Neely that would like to speak to that.
Hello, Dorothy Neely, 4440 Friendship Drive, Edgemore, South Carolina. And I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Chester County, and everything that needed to be said already have been said. The matter is now making a decision, and not just any decision, the right decision for the county of Chester. It's rural. It's country, and it's still, people love the country. It's still, people want to keep yard. And anytime, it don't take a rocket scientist to see that when millions of dollars involve, it tends to blind the man, the mind of the man, and we forget about everything else that's important: land, animals, peace. You can't, you don't have peace when it's so much traffic in and out. And like she said, this ain't Beverly Hills, and we don't want, we don't want the country to be like Beverly Hills. We want the country to stay the country. No HMO, HMAs, all of this stuff. If I want to put 10 windmills in my yard, I want to be able to do that. If I want to paint my house purple-green and orange, I want to be able to do that. And so to bring all that stuff here in the country that, that, the country, that ain't what the country stood for. That is not what the country stood for, and the country needs to stay the country. All of that, and the choices, you guys. You guys got the right to make the right decision, not just any decision. Make the right decision for the Chester County residents. And that's just too much going on. Chester can't even hold the capacity of what's already here. The police, they can't control that. I ain't never seen so many memorials up and down the road now because of so many traffic. People coming from other areas don't even know the country, so they driving like they up the road, and they coming, they running directly into trees. And when I drive down the highway, it looks like I'm driving down a cemetery because of memorials. It's too much traffic. And I want you to think about the decision that you got to make tonight. We don't need that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Neely was the only one that signed up for that, but is it anyone else like to speak to the public hearing for this reading of 2023-19 for the executive and delivery of development agreement between Chester County and Gaston? Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Miller. I reside at 1682 Pleasant Grove Road, and I appreciate everybody's input tonight and the council hearing this case time and time again. In light of this not being a full council, we've requested a deferral until the next meeting, and we'd like y'all to take that into consideration. Thank you.
What about that?
We have a quorum. We don't need a full. If the county wants a quorum, we need a quorum.
Okay, we do have a quorum here, so we can't take a legal vote tonight unless someone on council would like to address that issue.
Mr. Chairman, did I understand they have 450-something people on the petition?
We, just wait a minute. We don't, we addressing the issue of deferring this vote until we get a full council order? Do we want to go ahead and have the vote tonight with one councilperson out? That's the question before.
If we defer it, one will be the next reading?
November 2nd.
No, that's not right. Sorry.
I think it's the 6th. I think it's the 6th. And council would only be deferring the vote, not the public hearing, because the public hearing was published for this evening.
We don't have a vote, we don't have a motion to defer this, then we're going to take a vote tonight, right? All right. The public hearing is closed then. All right, now we're going to move on to number 6, which would be ordinance resolutions and proclamations. This would be the third reading of 2023-19 approving the execution and delivery of the development agreement between Chester County and Gaston Springs LLC regarding the Gaston Farm Road project and other matters related. We need a motion on that.
I make a motion, we deny it.
We got a motion to deny this, approving of this, and we got a second?
A second.
Second. Got a motion and a second in the discussion?
So to be clear, this is the development agreement. This is not the rezoning.
Right. Development agreement, that's right. Approving the execution and delivery of the development agreement between the county and Gaston Farms LLC regarding the Gaston Farm Road project and other related matters.
My input on that is, I think that if, however this vote goes for this development agreement, because we hadn't made the vote on the development agreement yet, but I would like this, I would like it added to this development agreement, that any monies from this developmental agreement will go in some type of trust or some type of fund until we decide how much money it actually is and use it properly in that community instead of using it haphazardly throughout the county. It should be used in the community that it comes from.
Okay, and?
So my question is, can that be added to this here like a, like we, you know, can we add that here and restate the motion?
We wouldn't be able to add it right now. We would have to go back and amend that developmental agreement. Then the developmental agreement, we have to go back for Ms. Winters. I assume it'd have to have another, well, we could do third on it.
I mean, they can, I mean, they can make an amendment this evening. My concern would be that if we're adding that to the development agreement, the developer doesn't have any say in how this council uses that money. That's a council decision.
Yeah, I'm not speaking on the developer having a say. What I'm saying is, if this third reading goes through for this development agreement and this development, my thoughts is that the money, the majority of this money should be used in that area. Because that area is the area that's impacted. Now, I'm not going to sit up here and be ignorant to the fact that, you know, that some of it may not have to be used in some other places, but the majority of it should be used in the area that's affected.
So your vote, yes, would be contingent on the money being placed into a restricted fund?
Exactly.
So Ms. Winters and I have had this discussion, and I've had discussions centered around not just this development agreement, but past development agreements that have the potential for funds to be coming in within the future. And I think the consensus is that we're going to draft up some type of ordinance for council to review and obviously approve where these funds, and we would word it, to where these funds that come in from development agreements stay within the impacted area and are used for growth within that impacted area. So that might mean fire stations, it might mean EMS stations, it might mean more sheriff deputies in those areas. It might mean parks and libraries, but for growth, for growth, I guess the right word to say is, the funds used for growth needs.
So what you're saying is, you want to, you want to come up with some type of document, for lack of a better word, that pretty much blankets all development agreements?
Correct. This one, past ones, and future, and it will, it will restrict funds from specific developments to the area that those, so those funds. So we'd have to, you know, I've spoke with our treasurer about how we would set that up. But again, that's something that we've been working on right now. We're not expecting any kind of funds from any of the approved for quite a few years, so.
So I guess my question is, and I like that idea, but I guess I want to know tonight, is it possible to add that to this one tonight? We can do the ones going forward, but is it possible to add this one? Add that to this one?
It seems to me. You don't know what the vote comes out in now. I mean, the motion was to deny.
Right.
And to deny this, and that's not going to be, but make it clear, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Winters, is that this year is only, this ordinance here is only to approve the $5,000 to add on to the, for the, that's all this motion is, was far, and Mr. Agee has made a motion to deny.
Mr. Guy, we've got two questions here. It seems to me like if we want to have, if we want to vote on a $5,000 development agreement, I don't see a problem with that. What he just got up and said was he wants to withdraw that, and we're voting on $5,000 for Gaston, Gaston Farm. There it is, right there. And he just said he wants to defer that, so that's not the vote.
There was no motion.
If we're going to do it, we're voting on $5,000 for Gaston Farm. We're not voting on $5,000 for everything else.
No, you're not. You're voting on a specific development agreement for Gaston Farm or Gaston Springs.
It's already been decided that we were going to take a vote. We wasn't going to.
I understand that, but what Mr. Guy's asking, and what I'm hearing, is he wants the $5,000 to be blah, blah, blah. Well, if Gaston Farm, Gaston Springs doesn't work out, we just voted on nothing right now. We don't, if he doesn't come back next time, we not going, we're going to be voting on something done now.
If your, if your motion passes, there won't be no development agreement. That's my point.
Oh, I agree with you.
Is that correct, Ms. Winters?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, you know, all that's mute according to what the outcome of this vote is. So the vote is whether or not to, which your motion was to deny putting in a $5,000 development fee on this project. That's the motion, correct?
That's the motion.
Yes.
Right. All right, we got, we in discussion now? Do we have a second? You have a second, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Ms. Vaughn.
Second, is there? Have any more discussion?
I'll just say that I think a, I think it makes sense that if this is approved, the development agreement, then the issue of the rezoning would be held here in just a moment when we take that vote. So I'm going to be voting against this motion because I want to see us really settle the matter when we get to Agenda Item 8A.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to deny this ordinance, the $5,000 on basically the development agreement on this, which would be equal to $5,000 on this development. So everybody read the vote. All right, all in favor of denying this, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All opposed this? Has two voted in favor, Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Agee? All in favor of not denying this, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion fails, so we'll, I guess we can get another motion on there. All right, so now we'll bring this back and for the motion to be approved for this, execution of this development agreement to be approved. Do I have a motion on that?
Yeah, I want to make a motion that we approve this development agreement for $5,000 per home on Gaston Farms Road, but also add to the motion that this money will be put in some type of trust so that the money could be used for the area that's affected.
Got a motion by Mr. Guy. You have a second on that?
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Mosley there? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Guy, there may be some legal limitations as to us taking revenue and putting into a trust. So I have to be careful or just kind of give a little guidance there. We can, we would have to get council to create a, kind of like a special, almost like a reserve account, but that would be the intention with these funds. You have my, you have my word that that is what we're working on with any development agreement, whether it's this one, another one, even the past ones, as we are working diligently to come up with wording and an ordinance, that those funds will be used in the areas that they're encumbered, as well as how they will be used that council will approve. They will not be spent without council approval. They will not go into a general fund.
So you know I trust you, and you know I love you, but let's just say, for instance, you go out there and get hit by a truck.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then we hire a new administrator, and this is not done. So that's why I was wanting to, not, but that's why I was wanting to put that on this ordinance so that I can make sure that the people in this area benefit from the development agreement money instead of this money being used in an area that's not affected by this.
So do we need to treat?
That's only, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
If the word trust, then that's what holds it.
It doesn't have to be.
I get a little wary about that. Ms. Winters, I think, has a suggestion.
So you're not suggesting that it go into a trust? You're asking that it go into trust or restricted account?
Exactly.
And restricted account is where we were going.
That's a good, great word.
And then at a later date, could we decide percentage, like maybe a percentage of, like, I know, impact fees are 80/20, I believe, so 80% goes to the impacted area, 20% to the county.
You're going to have to create that pie chart.
All that kind of stuff that we need to go over, so that's at a later date. I was making sure we didn't have to do that tonight.
So if you could just?
So I'll restate that motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Guy, hold on. That's okay. Ms. Mosley, if you could withdraw your second?
Oh, withdraw my second.
Okay, all right.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the execution and delivery of a development agreement between the county and Gaston Farms, Gaston Springs LLC, and add that we take all monies that are collected via our developmental agreement and put it in a restricted account so that the majority of this money should be used in the area that's affected.
All right, we need a second on that?
Second.
Now, you got a second on that? Is it any discussion on this motion? Which I think the wording on that is much better on that, and we appreciate that. No more discussion?
So there's discussion on, still discussion on this?
Oh, yes.
So to make it clear to those that may not understand, the $5,000 per home will equate to close to $2 million at the end of the, close, right? Yeah, close. Yeah, $2 million or more. So in my eyes, that's a lot of money to use in that area for, and we just come at a later date and figure out how we're going to use it in that area, but I think if this passes, that, that, they deserve, they deserve that money being used in that area.
Any more discussion?
So that money would be?
One more thing now.
Go ahead, Ms. Riche.
If I understood it right, there were 450-something names on the petition. It says they don't want anything to do with any money that's collected. They want, the lady in the orange back there said they want it to stay just like it is. 450-something people voted for us, and I'm not going against the will of the people. I don't care if it's $5 million or whatever. They have a right to say they don't want this in their community, and I'm going to vote that way.
On, Mr. Wilson, you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so the money from the development agreement, that would come about when the building permits are pulled, and so that's still, if this is approved tonight, that project would still be months, if not more than a year away. And so we have, we have time to figure out how best to use the money, and I'm in total agreement, that money needs to be used in those areas where they come from.
Anybody, anyone else? Okay, okay, we'll go for a vote. All in favor of approving this development agreement, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
What's that? Ms. Mosley, Ms. Guy, myself, and Mr. Wilsons? Or all opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Agee opposed on. All righty, so that passes that. Okay, moving along to number 7, we go into the administrators' report. Turn over, Mr. Heston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, hopefully I can lighten the atmosphere just a little for us, for a few minutes at least.
Well, hopefully I can lighten the atmosphere just a little for us, for a few minutes at least, and present some, some really positive news for the county. So I'm gonna kind, I'm not going in any particular order, but I'd like to announce the filling of some very key positions and talk about that real briefly. First, we have hired a Parks and Recreation Supervisor that will fall under our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Director, which council approved that here recently. That person's start date will be October 23rd. They come to us from Hartsville, South Carolina, where they were the Parks and Recreation Supervisor there, and actually one of the interviewees that we had for our Parks and Recreation Director position. Highly qualified, highly, been highly involved in community recreation, not just youth sports, but community recreation for all ages. And so I think they're gonna bring a nice compliment to our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Division. Next is, I am proud to be able to say that we have brought home a Chester hometown person. We are bringing them home from Los Angeles, California, to be our project manager. And so I've made a job offer to Mr. Harold Hayes, who was, went right here to Chester High School, left after graduating high school, I don't know if anyone in here knows who I'm talking about, but, left here after graduating high school, went to college to get a degree in architecture, has worked in architecture and project management for the last fifteen-plus years, worked in Atlanta, Washington DC, and Los Angeles, and wants to come back home to Chester County, where he was from, to contribute to his community, to be with his family. And I think that is just amazing story that we can tell, and he has accepted the job offer. And hopefully, we're working on a start date, obviously he's got to move all the way across the country, but we're looking potentially two to three weeks to get him here and get him started. Next, I would like to say that Mr. Kel Benson, I think's in the room tonight, yep, there he is back there. Kel, stand up, let everybody see you. Mr. Kel Benson, don't applause for him now, don't do that, okay? But anyway, we have named Mr. Kel Benson our Emergency Services Director, and so there was a little bit of restructuring. No, we have not combined EMS and Fire, contrary to popular belief sometimes. We have just combined the leader of those two fine departments that we have. And Mr. Benson came to us with over twenty years in the fire and EMS experience. He was a captain with Charlotte Fire Department, lives right here in Lowry's, so another hometown guy that has come back to contribute to his community, I think that's fantastic. Good news, council doesn't even know this yet, but after some negotiations, we have, I have made an offer for an Animal Control Director, and they have accepted as of this afternoon. And so we, we are going to have a new Animal Control Director, comes to us with experiences, what be called a Chief Animal Control Officer in York County. Works has, our new Human Resources Director's been a little innovative in some of his practices and has worked with South Carolina Works, who's going to provide us with two employees, part-time. They're college students who are in the Vet Tech Programs, Vet Groomer or Veterinarian School Program, and they're gonna work for us part-time at no charge to us. South Carolina Works pays their salary, we get 240 hours out of each of those employees at no cost to our taxpayers through a partnership with South Carolina Works. And they're gonna help with our animal shelter and some of the chores and different things around there, as well as get to kind of learn a little bit about the profession that they're looking to go into. So, I think that is all I've got. I sent an administrator's report out to you guys and had some other information in it. But now to conclude my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I've got two quick questions if I can ask you.
Yes, sir.
Is the Parks and Recreation gentleman gonna live in Chester County?
Uh, we're not real sure. His, his, he lives in Hartsville right now, and so there was no requirement on him to live in Chester County. His wife works in Columbia, and so I assume that they're gonna find somewhere between Chester and Columbia. Probably depends on where he can find housing will be the real key thing. And one of his comments was it was tough finding some housing here in Chester County.
What about the project director?
Our project manager, who's coming back here from LA, he's gonna live right here in Chester County. As well as, as well as Mr. Benson, and then our Animal Control Director, he does live kind of on the county line right now, I believe, is what he, he told me, but kind of up in the corner. But again.
Can you divulge that name on the Animal Control?
Yes, sir, his name is Lance Davis.
Lance Davis?
Yes, sir.
All righty, while, while you are giving your report there, I would like to, for us to look into this carport deal. Boys, at Mr.?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hartis?
Hartis, Hartis, I believe it was.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
His name is Chief of Police, Fort Long Town, Fort Long Town.
I think, in my personal opinion, I think that he's had a valid complaint. So I think we need to look into it and see what we can come up with.
Yes, sir, and I, I actually made a note here, ordinance, carports, potentially a tax change, it would allow certain type structures, so we'll definitely look into it.
All right.
Mr. Hester, I'd like to commend you for the excellent hiring you were doing to take Chester County forward. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, I appreciate that.
And I think that's the sentiment of all council. I know you've done, been working very hard to replace this with quality people and, and to the point of increasing salaries so we can retain them and this type of thing. So, I feel sure the whole council agrees with that sentiment there. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for that. All right, does that conclude your report? All right, moving into number eight on the agenda is old business. This will be the third reading of CCMA 23-09. Gaston Springs LLC, Benji Lehman requests a portion of 20.04 acres of Tax Map 114-00-00-059-000 located at Gaston Farm Road and adjacent to I-77 to be rezoned from limited industrial ID-2 to Plan Development District, PD. The Planning Commission voted five to a two, to, five to two to approve.
We'll move that we approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second, open for discussion.
Yes, I would like to call, first, I, what, first thing I want to say is, some of this, Gaston Farm Road is actually in my district. But that's not all that's in my district. I have a lot of the city of Chester in my district. I have Center Road in my district, I have York Road in my district, I have, my district is a really, really large district. So I have to listen to my entire district as a whole when I make decisions. So I get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, I try to answer as many as I can, make some calls, answer some texts. And one, I got one call, one email, and one of the citizens wanted me to ask the builder about the quality of their homes, so I would like to speak with the, someone who represents the builder to ask you some questions.
Christopher Bustow, 517 Sutton Road in Fort Mill, South Carolina. We've committed to, in the PD document, to using hardy plank siding. We've have bigger lots, I think you've said, you've seen, we've got ten-foot side yards which are required. The quality of our homes are very good. I think it's a level above what's being currently offered in the market. We've, any of the architectural requirements we've worked on with Mike Levisser, we've, we've put those into the document itself.
So, one of you, so we'll start there with the ten-foot. So, each, each lot?
Yep.
Let's say for instance, I bought one of the lots. I have ten-foot of my own space, and the person beside me has ten-foot.
That's correct.
Is ten-quarter adequate, in your opinion, to drive a car around to the back of my home? Without going on, let's say for instance, without going on my neighbor's property, could I drive around the back of that home in ten-foot?
Yeah, I think a travel lane on a road is between eight and nine feet, so if you have ten feet in your side yard, you should be able to drive your vehicle to your backyard.
Okay, so will your neighbors be allowed to put up any fencing or anything of that nature?
Sure.
Would the HOA will allow for that?
Yeah, the HOA will allow for fences, and we will allow for vehicles in the backyard. So, the HOA will not allow to have any?
I, I only ask that question because I'm, I'm trying to put in perspective the width between each yard. So I'm trying to put it in perspective to everyone, so they'll understand what's going on. So, if I can, if you only got ten percent in the, ten feet, and the neighbor can put up a fence.
Yes.
And let's say for instance, I got a trash can on the side of, on the side of the house, or?
Okay.
Any, I can't drive a car around there.
Not without moving the trash can, no.
Yeah, so I'm, that's, so I'm just putting in perspective the size. And the reason why I put it in perspective the size is because it's not a secret. I moved away from Chester, moved to Charlotte, and I moved back here. And I lived in a development that the homes were real close together.
Probably five-foot side yards.
Carports were front-loaded, and I couldn't even drive a car in the backyard to, when I moved, to even load up my storage house in the back.
Gotcha.
So I, I view that as a, as a problem. Like I said before, I'm not, I'm not, I've got, my district is, is large, and I think some of the citizens know that I voted for you guys on the first two readings.
Yes.
But my question is to you, now that it's come up, is there any way we can change that and make those lot sizes, make that clearance a little bit bigger?
I mean, we've, we're pretty far down the road with the ten-foot side yard on the, on the designs. I mean, we're, I think it's all in our documentation, everything we've submitted now. I don't even know that we could make a change to that at this point. Ten feet is, is, Charlotte is five feet, so we're, we're double what Charlotte would be. We are at seven feet in Rock Hill, we're at ten feet here in Richburg in Chester County.
And that's fact what you're telling me, I can go and research that and?
Yes, we have my civil engineer who's here, and he can tell you from, from Statesville to here, all of the different side yards that come through. In Union County, we're at ten feet in Union County.
So you're above Charlotte and above, who else?
Fort Mill.
And above Fort Mill. And I can research that and find that out for sure.
Yes, you can, and I'd be glad to send you all the documentation to show where all of the different side yards are. Ten feet is the biggest in all of the Charlotte MSA that I work in, from Union County to Gaston County to Statesville. Ten feet is a, is a big side yard.
Okay. The other, the other. The other question I have is the quality of the homes.
Yes.
So you said you're gonna use hardy plank siding and what else?
We are. So we'll do hardy plank siding, we've got porches on a lot of the, a lot of the elevations, we've got a mix of materials. We will have overhangs on the side of the houses. I think some of the houses that you're seeing built now don't have any overhangs on the sides. There's a litany of, of things that we agreed to in the, in the document, and it's in the development agreement as well.
Okay, so no vinyl siding, hardy plank. So I went on your website, and I did see, was reading reviews and things of that nature. I'm not gonna say that it was a bunch of overbearing reviews, but there were some things that concerned me as far as review. There were some cement issues and things of that nature, and you, I saw where your people replied, and you know, just, but, my thing is, I'm gonna push, whether this, if this passes, I'm definitely gonna be pushing our billing and zoning director to make sure that you guys do what you're supposed to do as far as billing these homes in the correct way. We just got, we got a development at Knightsbridge right now, Ms. Dodd's talked about it.
Yep.
Uh, runoff, things of that nature. So it's, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to be stringent.
We would, we would value any of the, you know, we're doing 200 homes a year, basically in the Charlotte market as a whole. We do roughly 14,000 in the country a, a year. So I'm, I'm not sure of the three specific ones you saw, but there's a lot of people that are also very happy with the homes that we're building for them. But yes, we understand the erosion control measures and the creeks. The creek runs right through the center of our, our track, that's where all of our property basically drains to one internal creek that runs out.
What he didn't ask, you will not be able to get a brush truck around back of them to fight the fire that's gonna be going toward Mr. and Ms. Gaston's house. You're gonna have to carry your water, you're gonna have to drag your hoses, you're gonna have to do all that stuff. You can't get a fire truck right now. I'm talking about a pickup truck.
Which end of the property is that?
A brush truck.
I said which end of the, that's on the far end of the property?
No, it's up, it's up, any house, you can't put a brush truck between those houses. You gotta get it in the back, and it's gonna be a long line of them, so if it's halfway down, and you need to get in the back of the, back of the yard that backs up to the property owner next to it to fight a brush fire, the men and women are gonna be dragging those hoses, gonna be what?
So, um.
What they want, but that's crazy.
So price point, that was another question I got, the price point?
So, we, we have three different product lines we'll have out there. The lowest, the smallest of the homes will be from 315 to 345, somewhere in there. Then we have a ranch series product that we'll be doing, that'll be our middle price point. That'll be from 335 to 365, 370. And then the larger forty-foot bodied, like standard traditional homes, those will be from 350, 360 up to 400. And those will be base prices, we typically see 10 to 12% options. This is an amended high subdivision as well. Councilman Guy, you know, we have a, a pool and recreation area that we've committed to with playgrounds and extensive trail system. So if you look at our site plan, we have lots of creeks and draws through there that have trails that are all drawn in them as well, and, and actually they're included with some plans we just submitted to Mike Levisser.
Mr. Hester, how, how does this price point compare to the other houses that we've approved already?
Sorry, I think this is probably on the upper end of what's been approved so far. However, I did speak to US Development, which has actually turned over to Forestar, which is Village Drive, Woodhaven Project, and where they originally started to be in the 200s, now they're expected to be more in the high 2s. Just due to when some of these projects were approved, the price point they were at, materials aren't the same anymore.
Also, Councilman Guy, we're, we're two years away from starting basically vertical construction out here. That's how long it will take, assuming we get a favorable vote, to draw the subdivision plans and get permits, and then move all the earth and put the curb and the gutter and the sidewalks and the sewer. I mean, it's nearly a two-year process before we're going, we're going vertical.
So if it's, if it's, if it's a two-year process, I was asking this question, if it's a two-year process, then why can't we go and try to make the lots bigger, if we got a two-year process?
Well, the design, well, we, we're pretty far down the road in the overall design of the, the plan that's there. And like I said, the ten-foot is, is a, is a larger than we've seen in any, or equal to the, the size that we have in any other municipality we work in.
Okay, I may have some more questions later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, yeah, I guess so. I, I think everybody knows I'm mostly in favor of it. I've been in favor of it from, from the beginning. It's, it's a hard issue, and, and I hear the concerns in the room. I think the one thing I do, I do hear them. Mr. Chairman.
Please, please no comment.
Please, please no comment.
I, I do hear them. I do hear them. You can, you can question my character if you want to, but I'll stand by that statement. I do hear them, I do care.
We don't have any detrimental comments against council people and you'll be removed from the room if you do.
You know, we, I think the one thing we can all agree on is I'll be glad, I think we'll all be glad to have an answer tonight to this, to settle this. I think that's the one thing we can agree on. So, you know, there's a lot of issues at play here. The issue of property rights, there has to be a balance. And, and you know, if you really want to have property rights, that means you get more to do with your land, but it means that, which includes selling it, but it means that you have less to do with your neighbor's land. And, and that's hard, I know, I know that's a hard one. Last year, this council had 11 requests come before us that were from just average citizens and all 11 requests were approved by this council for zoning changes. So, the comment was made earlier that we, you know, don't, don't do that, but we do. We, we listen to their request and, and I think we vote in it by its merit. Whether this vote goes up or down, I, I, I will believe that still. So, you know, I've, I've talked in the past about limited government and what that looks like and what it means to me. No need to go all into that before, most of you have heard it before. You know, we've, we had the workshop with Mr. Charlie Compton and it was very helpful. His, his points about traffic are really important to understand. That if we have density, it actually allows the traffic to hit those collector roads and get to the main roads much quicker. If we spread that 400 homes across the county, it's actually gonna cause more traffic. And, and that's not me speaking, that's from his 40-plus years of experience. You know, I, I hear the comments of, about density all the time. That kind of goes back to me about limited government and property rights. You know, if somebody wants to live in that dense environment and it's safe, is following the rules, the fire codes, then I'm not sure it's up to us to say no to that. Now, now there are, there are restrictions we can put, there's, there's things we can do and we've done those things. We, we have requirements about visibility buffers so that it's not, so that it, so that it's not just houses right up against the road. We have things in place that we've improved over the last few years and I think those are meaningful things. I trust Mr. Hester, we're gonna, we're gonna keep working on that to always improve. But, but we're at a good place on that. Going back to Mr. Charlie Compton, when he came to us and spoke to us at our workshop, he talked about the hierarchy of growth. And he talked about how it began with the industry, jobs, and then that followed that was homes and then eventually commercial. And it's important to understand that hierarchy. I really believe if we wanna slow down growth in our county, it's gonna begin with how we treat industry and how we treat incentivizing industry. And I'm just saying that's a really important point to understand. That the houses are more of an effect, not the cause. And I, I am a big believer in letting the market decide, not just the type of houses, but where they're located as well. And my interpretation of what Mr. Compton said was the same as that as well. He, he spoke a lot about allowing the market to work. And he talked a lot about the collector roads, this is definitely a collector road. It's not a local road, it's a collector road. So, I've spoken in the past about consistency. This council continues to vote to incentivize industry to locate here. If we continue to do that, we're, we're, when we take those votes, we're voting for change, we're voting for growth. And, and whether that's popular or not, that's, that's what we're doing. Maybe we should reconsider that as a council. But we can't continue to vote for industrial projects and not expect there to be an increase in population and a need for dense housing. So, a lot about the Gateway Plan, last thing I'll say is that there's a lot of attention on the one map that has shades of colors. And, and I understand where, where they're coming from with that. But that was explained to me when I voted on it back in 2017 when I first arrived, that that was, that was a, that was not our zoning document. And again, we have zoning changes and we have a process for changes to happen. When zoning came about in this county, there was no land zone for plan developments. That means that any plan developments have to be rezoning. So, that's an important consideration to think about. So anyways, just in closing, I'm gonna do what I always do. I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I've studied this issue 100 different ways. I've had a lot of folks challenge me on it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I think is best and, and go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any, any further comments?
Yeah, the only other thing I will say is, and I think I, I think I need to speak on this because it is in my, in my district. And I've had, I've had people in my district, which is a very large district, I say again, approach me in both ways, for and against. Again, to break down my district, again, my district is not only, it's not just one section, it's one of the biggest districts around. So, just last Saturday, I was at an event in, in Chester and I had someone else in my district. The words were, if, if you vote to deny the planning of, if you vote to deny the plan development, we're gonna vote you out. Then I had people tell me, if I, if I vote for it, they're gonna vote me out. So, you know, it leaves me in a hard, leaves me in a hard, hard place. So, you know, it takes a lot of prayer and a lot of, I have to really think about what I'm, what I'm voting and how I'm voting. And the only way I can do it is put myself in those situations and use my prior experience. And one thing I will say, I've, I've heard a lot about the Gateway Master Plan and people saying stick with the Gateway Master Plan. But again, I've lived in a highly populated area before and with, with the type of housing that we're having. And just right down the street from me was industry. There was a big place called TJ Maxx Warehouse. And I couldn't get to my job because of the traffic. Because that industry had more traffic than any development in my area. The citizens that lived there, my neighbors, we, we wasn't the traffic. It was the people getting off in the morning, the people coming in, the trucks and things of that nature. With Gaston Farm Road being in my district, I'm gonna tell y'all, my, my personal opinion is, you don't want industry on that. Let's say for instance, if Amazon Fulfillment Center decides to buy their property, that's a thousand employees every day, in and out, trucks in and out. So, yes, I know we have the Gateway Master Plan, but I'm speaking to the people in my district. Understand, you, you, you don't want that. Because if we, if it does come to industry, that's not coming before us. The industry's coming because it's already zoned in. It's nothing to talk about. That industry's coming, those thousand employees are coming, those trucks are coming. But we got, and one of the reasons why I asked them about the price point, we got houses that are valued at 300, 350 to $400,000. That's a nice house in my opinion. It's more expensive than mine. I think it's, I think it's a very nice house. I don't think it would damage any of our property values or things, or anything of that nature. You know, you say, who voted me in? You guys voted me in, in this, in this, in this building here today. But I also have other people that voted me in too. And I, that's one of the reasons why I try to find a common medium to make this work for everybody. This has been one of the most difficult votes I've had to make. I understand that I'm not gonna satisfy everybody. I hope that you guys will continue to trust. But I will say, you do not want an industry on that property. With the amount of industry that we have knocking on Chester's door, we gotta go in executive session tonight and talk about industry. We just had a guy come in here today, stand right there and talk about industry. Industry's coming. It's coming. And it's, when they get on that lot, I'm, because if, if, if we don't do plan development, you can't expect the property owner to just sit on it. He's gonna sell it. And he's gonna sell it to some industry and that is not what you want on that road. So, just understand that I've listened to all of your, your emails, I've listened to all your phone calls and I am actually, I'm really, I've really taken all of that into consideration with this. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Any more discussion or comments?
I'm, I'm, I'm disagreeing with Mr. Wilson just a little bit. He, he represents an agricultural error of this county and you cannot believe the functions of agriculture in this country. We have to have agriculture, we have to have farms, we have to have milk cows, we gotta have all of these things. And there's an area for that, and that's West Chester, which Mr. Wilson represents. And I respect that. And I have some real good friends out there, probably one of my best friends in life lives in his area. However, nobody, not anybody asked the citizens of Richburg, of where I was born and raised, what they want. Not, not one person. You can look out my back, out of my bedroom window in this county council, the planning commission gave permission for Duke Powell to build an electrical substation in 300 feet from my bedroom. Less than 300 feet from my bedroom. The county council approved, upheld the planning commission to do that. The zoning board of appeals over, upheld that. So, there's a electrical substation less than 300 feet from my bedroom window that my wife and I gotta live next to. And I won't get into all of that issue, but for the sake of argument, nobody paid me any attention when I sat out there and did what y'all did and spoke against that. Not, not one person. You hired me. You hired each one of these people to represent you. The first thing I heard when I went to the Association of Counties workshop was that I had to look after everybody. That's great, God made green apples. The citizens that hired me is who I'm gonna look at. And Mr. Wilson, he needs to worry about what the citizens of Lowry's hired him for. Mr. Guy does the same thing. And then we have a common denominator in fire, emergency management and police protection. That is the common denominator of this county. The school board is totally, no, I found something today. The school board is not totally independent, they can be controlled, I found that out today. But what we've got to do is, is respect the people and what they want. And this old boy's gonna do that, as Mr. Hester loves to make fun of me. I'm just a simple country boy from Richburg, South Carolina, and that's all I'm gonna ever be. I'm gonna represent the people that, that did that. Because in January of next year, you will have an opportunity to put more people on this council. And that's what you gotta take out of this meeting tonight. Is you gotta uphold that. Because I want somebody to tell me, who in the boogeyman in this county can afford to make a payment on a $400,000 house? That's people that are gonna be moving in here from elsewhere that don't respect what that lady right in front of us, Del Ligon, just got up here and said. And I appreciate what your comments were.
Let me just add to this if I could. I know everyone else has spoken and I know that I represent every single district here, every single one of you. Everybody in this room, everybody watching, everybody that doesn't watch, everybody that, whether they voted or not, I still represent that, those people. As, as it was pointed out, where my home is, I'm right in the middle of Lowry Road and Gaston Farm. I know what the traffic's like every day, both directions. However, let me add this to kind of go back with what Councilman Guy said about a factory. I sit there and I think, pulled out today thinking, I could just see if it's, if it were to stay industrial and we have an Amazon facility or a warehouse or something similar to that, I can just see tractor-trailer trucks constantly. And I know there's a lot of cars, believe me, every morning, every evening, every intermittent part of the day, I see it, I feel it. And sometimes I laugh and sometimes I get mad at people. So, so I completely understand and Mr. Guy is absolutely correct. If you see what could happen, and we have no say, it doesn't come before us, it could just happen. You have zero say, zero, zero input to anything. Somebody, they could come in if Mr. Miller decides to sell the property or wants to develop it as a warehouse or what have you. You could have shift changes, trucks, what kind of trucks, who knows? I don't say who knows. We would know, but you know, we don't have a say in that. But as long as it meets the guidelines of an ID2. Those are the things that I think about and I worry about. I, not to say that I would ever, you know, choose to live in a development like that, it's not my place to say who lives, whatever way they choose. What I'm saying is, I see the alternative to a neighbor and that is more concerning to me than the housing development. Like it or not, that's just how I feel and I'm right in the middle of it. Just like I've said a time or two before, I'm the only council member as close to this as, as I am. And I am literally 1.2 miles, I think, from it. And as far as the proximity of Highway 9 to the beginning of this development, it's not even a mile for a connector road, just like Mr. Wilson said. So, you look at those issues, and I know there's a four-way stop and we had discussions about, you know, the flashing stoplight, those types of things. I'm absolutely in favor of traffic safety and concerns in those things. And the school issue, like I said, there's, there's a couple of years away on that. Those are things that we can work together with our other entities here in the county to make sure that we, these things are upheld. And change is hard, it's so hard. You know, I graduated from Louisville High School 30 years ago and it's definitely not the two-lane Highway 9 that it used to be when you used to pull out of Louisville High School. Yeah, I'm that old. So, it is just not the same. And you know, as much as we hate it, as much as it, as it is, housing is needed. And you know, just kind of go back with what Mr. Wilson said as well. If we can't expect the industry to fund everything and not expect the houses and the growth to come with it. I, I think that we're at a good place to where if this does pass, that we're, we're at a good, I don't wanna say stopping point, but our, actually our infrastructure won't be able to handle much more. So, those are the, those are the things I really want you to, to, to try to think about and really take into consideration. We're not just sitting up here just making decisions just to make you mad or make somebody upset or to please somebody else. We're really trying to look at every single thing that, that could make it better and to make our whole entire community better. And I, I do appreciate everybody's good emails, bad emails, all those things, you know. I, I do read them, you know, and sometimes it's hard. It's hard because sometimes you really don't know what to say because it's, 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 it's just in a tough spot. So, please don't think that any, any decision made is, is made lightly, I promise. Because of anybody in this room is affected more than probably myself and, and your neighbors. So, I'm, I'm right there with you.
Let me be the last one to speak. I agree with everything Ms. Mosley said, the part especially about how hard these decisions are to make. When I started serving, development was coming at us 90 miles an hour, one project after the other. And I found myself voting to approve most of those projects, every project came before us, a lot of homes. And I got to the point with, it's, I just wondered, was I voting to go along or was I voting to do what I think is right? And just like Ms. Mosley, Mr. Branham, Pete Wilson and Corey Guy and Aaron Mosley, we all do that, we all do what we think is right after we give it all of our attention. We give it a lot of attention. We get all kind of advice and input from every different direction. We base our decisions on that. And we, there's no reason for us to always have to agree on things. We have differences in opinions and we still respect each other greatly. On this project, I'm gonna vote no. After listening to a lot of people's comments, that's the decision I made. But I still respect my colleagues up here tremendously. The fact that they serve the county of Chester, what they do.
That's it? All right, if that's all the comments we have, a discussion, we'll bring it up for a vote. All in favor of Tax Map, for the third, for the third reading of CCMA 23-09? Raise your right hand, say aye. Got Ms. Mosley, Mr. Guy, myself and Mr. Wilson in favor, all opposed? Got Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Agee opposed, so that's passed. So that passes. Okay. Moving along to B under eight on the agenda, the third reading of CCMA 23-10. Gaston Springs LLC Benji Lehman requests a portion of 150.76 acres of tax map 114-00-00-015-000, located at Gaston Farm Road and adjacent to I-77, to be rezoned from limited industrial district ID two to planned development district PD. The planning commission voted five to two to approve. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. We approve the third reading of CCMA 23-10. Gaston Springs LLC Benji Lehman requests a portion of tax map number 114-00-00-015-000, Gaston Farm, from limited industrial ID two to planned development.
Okay. Need a second? Second by Mr. Guy. I'll open it up for discussion or comments.
No discussion. This is here. It's the same, same thing. I'll just add again and just reiterate, my decision is made because I, I do not want to see industrial on that property. And I, I just reiterate that I'm making my decision because I do not wanna see industrial on that property. I don't think with the amount of industrial growth that we're having, I don't think that that area is a good area for that. I think the citizens there would definitely, definitely not want that industrial, that area industrialized. So that's the reason why I'm making that vote.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. And we'll be voting on CCMA 23-10. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. One, Ms. Mosley, and Mr. Guy, myself, and Mr. Wilson voted in favor. All opposed. Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Agee voted against on that. So it passes. Okay. Under new business, Rural Fire Commission is requesting budgeted grant money for fire departments to apply for a $5,000 matching forestry grant. Call on Mr. Dale Benson.
Mr. Chair, Council, Mr. Hester, Ms. Winters, I'm here on behalf of the county fire departments to streamline some of our grant requests. The purpose I'm here tonight is to request matching grants for the South Carolina Forestry Commission's forestry grant or VFA grant. The county's already allocated $5,000, already budgeted. We had nine departments request matching funds, which six of those are asking the full amount of 5,000 matching from the county. Forestry gives 5,000. So it's a total of $10,000. Two of those are for approximately $2,500. And the one caveat, the way that the forestry grant lays out, they will exceed $5,000 in matching grants. Just depends on how you write it. And we do have one department that did request more than that. If there is a leftover balance in the matching funds, and that is Lewis Fire Department, it was requesting a match of $11,581.
All right. We got that request. We have a motion to accept that request. And also stating this, that all this money that the matching grant has already been approved on this, I've already checked on that.
Yes, sir.
We, we don't need to, the treasurer's not here to ask about it. So but it is, we do have it in our budget to do that. So I need a, need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Agee. Any discussion? You hear no discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Unanimous vote.
Thank you for your time.
As sir. And thank you and congratulations on your new position. And we're looking forward to working with you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Under nine, under B, the first reading of CCMA 23-11. Tayanda Latille Kelly requests tax map 069-04-02-051-000, located at 522 Gloria Drive off of Pinkney Road, to be rezoned from multi-family residential district, which is RG1, to general residential district RG2. The command, the planning commission voted six to zero to approve. Need, I made a motion on that for the first reading?
I move that we approve the first reading of CCMA 23-11.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the difference between the two?
Mr. Agee, so the RG2, with one, it's currently, it's not permitted for a mobile home. So Ms. Kelly purchased a property from her aunt, and she wants to install a mobile home on the property. Mobile manufacturing homes are not permitted for use under the current zoning of an RG1.
Any more discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Moving on to C, first reading of CCMA 23-12. Griffin Land Holdings LLC CEO John H. Ross requests tax map number 106-00-00-121-000, located at Highway nine and Highway 909, to be zoned from rural two district RD, which is R2, to limited industrial district, which is ID two. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve with a five-year reverter clause and no entry off Rodman Road. Okay. Need a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. We approve the first reading of CCMA 23-12.
Okay. You got a second?
Ms. Mosley, would that be with the reverter clause?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yes.
I would, I would say that would be the whole reading on that.
Yeah. Apologize. You had to approve the five-year reverter clause and no entry off Rodman Road. Thank you.
Need a second?
I'll second it for a discussion.
Okay. Mr. Wilson seconds it. We open it up for discussion or comment?
So I'll tell you my concern. I've looked at it mostly in favor of the idea of this being industrial. But, but my concern is definitely the open-ended aspect of it. If there's a way that that can be tightened up, maybe there can be parameters. It is a little unusual. We've done it before. But compared to having a site-specific plan, then we know exactly what's going there, where there's lots of questions and input and dialogue back and forth. I'm just not quite sure we're ready to rezone this ID two without really having, having those, those details filled in. Maybe we can do that through parameters. I'm not sure. So at this point, I'm not, not in favor of it. But there might be, there might be a solution to that before next reading.
Like I say, we, after, if we, you know, of course, before we pass it tonight, it'll be three readings on this anyway. So maybe we can get someone to, Mr. Hester could further discuss this about some concerns we have about it.
So if I'm hearing Council correct, the concerns are with the fact that it's pretty open as to the use of this. And Council would like to see a map of an intended use to consider. Is that correct?
Is that your concern, Mr. Wilson?
Along those lines, yes.
Okay. So I know there's people here in the audience with that group. So if they would then contact me, and we can work through that.
It, it could also be restrictions in terms of what type of use it would be. I mean, ID two is, it limits it a great deal. But, but perhaps there could be other restrictions that could be given up that certain air permits won't be used, or I'm not sure. But we can have those conversations about other parameters that can be used to kinda give the citizens a better idea of what, how this will end up, if it's approved, how it would be used.
I would encourage Council to give me some guidance on that via phone, email, one way or the other. And then obviously, the land development company would be in contact with me.
This is the property that Dr. Clark was speaking to.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
And, and the number of buildings and things that were gonna be on it, his property surrounds, or touches this property a significant portion of it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see, I'd like to hear Ms. Grant explain to us how she mentioned something about being able to supply the Rodman Ballpark with some, some water and things of that nature. Could you please explain that to us, please?
Sarah, as the landscape architect, may be able to help me with this as well. When they're extending water and sewer to the site, to develop the site, we'll have the ability to run that up to the property line. So you can tap into it at Rodman Road Park.
Okay. So you're gonna do that yourself when you construct this park? You're gonna extend the water?
That's what we're looking at, yes.
To the edge of county property for Rodman Ballpark?
Correct.
Which way is the sewerage gonna go? You gonna go to Rocky Creek, or you gonna go back to Landau?
To Rocky Creek. To Rocky Creek.
To Rocky Creek. That was the right answer.
Thank you. I've got a good support network.
So counted to what Councilman Wilson was saying, your thought, so your architect was to plan to have curbing and roads and all of this paved roads and all of this stuff in this park?
Interior to the site, I think we're gonna be meeting all the ordinance requirement standards for how the parking and the interior roads need to lay out. In terms of the question about the number of buildings, we did a fit study to see what could fit on the site without having a specific tenant in mind so that you gave yourself the maximum flexibility. We can go back and reach out to you about restricting some of the uses.
What, what type of material would these buildings be made out of? Do you know that?
We don't know that at this point.
Well, can you know it by the next reading?
I believe we can, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
One other question about sewerage. Mr. Guy brought it up earlier. The sewer permitting is right on the border. Now, if you go to Rocky Creek, you got more capacity at Rocky Creek. But do you have that in writing from the sewer district?
For the record, yes, sir, we do.
Oh, you didn't know I'm gonna ask Mr. Thompson King? So I mean, that's a good one.
I was just doing it for the audio.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All in favor of, could this be the first reading of CCMA 23-12? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. I meant to vote opposed to that. Sorry.
Opposing to it.
He's, he's opposed to it.
I, I was confused. Let's call for the vote again. I'm sorry.
All right. Okay. All in favor of approving this as the first reading of CCMA 23-12? Raise your right hand and say aye. We only have two in favor.
Oh, I said that the first time. I'm sorry. I was reading some.
All right. All, that was, Ms., you voted, Ms. Mosley, you voted for it?
I voted for it, yes, sir.
You voted for it, Mr. Guy?
Yeah.
I voted. And y'all hadn't voted yet? Okay. All right. That's three, all opposed? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And got three and three. So that is a tie vote because we don't have it here. And a tie vote means it doesn't pass. Is that correct, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Of course, well, to reiterate that this is just the first of three readings, and it'll have to go through the three-reading process. And really, the one that says up or down will be on the third reading. As, as the first reading, it fails. You got the three that voted for and the three that voted against. It's, leave, okay. All right. All right. Under D, it is the first reading of CCMA 23-13. Jeff Sanders requests tax map number 115-00-00-102-000, located at 2707 Lancaster Highway, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from restricted industrial district, which is ID1, to limited industrial district ID2. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve. Need a motion on that?
Where does that add on Lancaster Highway? Is that now yours?
I'm thinking this is the old concrete plant, but that doesn't...
Oh, the Thomas Concrete Plant?
The old Thomas, right beside...
Truck's under race track.
Race track.
Race track. Where Alliance Truck is at now.
Are they gonna reopen the concrete plant?
That's what the, I'm, I would feel sure that's what they're requesting for.
So that is correct. It, they do wanna reopen it. But the current NEX code basically does not, it's ID1 to, they wanna change it ID1 to ID2. The, the current code does not allow this Ready Creek process. So it has to change. Mr. Levis, can you expand on that any? It looks like there's some confusion on that.
So good evening, Council. So the current use was a concrete plant before zoning was adopted in the county. But once it's abandoned for six months, the zoning says it has to meet the current zoning. Well, the current zoning of that parcel doesn't allow for him to reoperate the concrete mix plant.
Did they get the contract for one of those buildings up at...
If you wanna speak to the actual applicant, he is here. He can answer any questions that you have, John.
They're not gonna open it back up just to have it sitting there looking at it?
No. He, he's gonna operate it to help with the actual growth in the county with the industrial and residential.
I believe it was, a comment was made that he's been approached by several things that they, that would like for them to serve their building. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're, the plant's been idle since I've been with Thomas, which has been nine years. Jeff Sanders, 376 Green Pond Road, Clover, South Carolina. The plant's been idle for probably 12 years. We're delivering concrete to the area now. But we would like to reopen the plant. We have some current employees who live in Chester and would like to be closer to home. And it's just, looks like a good time to reopen the facility. And we'll actually reduce traffic because we won't be traveling as far with the product.
Okay. All right. We had a discussion. Did we get a motion on that yet? I don't think. We need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. We approve the first reading of CCMA 23-13.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Now we'll go with the discussion. I think, I think it's already been discussed so we know what it is and where it's going. So, and the purpose for them being here. So we hear no more discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Thank you for that. Okay. On number 10 on the agenda is the executive session. We're gonna go into executive session to discuss economic development matter, project number 2369. Need a motion to go into executive session.
So I'll make a motion. We're going to executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.